So I have the honor of being here to chair the meeting. I want to take us through the roll call very quickly noting that with those two exceptions, all council members are present and accounted for. We do have a quorum, and we will move to approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on May 4th. Are there any additions, comments to those minutes? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. Council items to be considered, are there any council items that we need to be brought before us, new business tonight? No, all right. Moving to the, oh, to the presentation for the Heritage Preservation Commission awards. Justin, would you please take us through that?
Sarah Witkenstein from the HPC is gonna go through the awards. If the council would wanna come down here and present the awards to the applicants, with the commissioners, that'd be nice.
That'd be lovely.
So as actually a moment of housekeeping, what we'll do is we'll go through the properties, and then we'll have all the property owners come up at the end, and we'll convene at the front.
As the committee wishes.
So greetings, everyone. I'm here, Sarah Witkenstein, representing as a member of the Heritage Preservation Commission of Hastings. The HPC is around to recognize and express appreciation for residential and commercial historic properties that have been well-maintained or restored in accordance with the city's heritage preservation guidelines. So I wanna thank the city council members for partaking and supporting our role in the community. So as we go through the presentation, first up, we have 212 East 7th Street. This is a before picture taken in 1993. This is the home of Russell Willetts. And protecting historic properties that may be at risk is an important element of the HPC's mission. Historic properties are often most at risk when there is a change of ownership, particularly when a significant amount of repair or restoration work is needed. We are very pleased to give the award to Russell Willetts, the new owner of 212 7th Street. His careful restoration and repair work has brought new life to this fine 1870s-era Gothic revival home, one of the only few Gothic revival-style properties in Hastings. This one-and-a-half-story home features Gothic revival board trim, two-screen porches, a bay window, six-over-six windows on the second story, side lights flanking the entry, and a unique and beautiful large oval window adjacent to the front door. There is the after photo. Next up, we have 207th Street West.
Sorry?
This lovely and well-maintained 1870s-era Greek revival-style property, home to John and Therese Fassbender, is well-suited to its corner lot locale, with interesting architectural features on both the south and east street-facing facades. Prominent local physician Dr. Herman A. Fassbender purchased the home in 1925 and sold it to his son, Dr. Herman T. Fassbender, in 1948. Among the property is many distinctive features and details: two porches, a bay window, symbol but striking window surrounds, paneled corner boards topped by capitals, and an entry framed with a transom and side lights. Next property is 603 West 6th Street, home to Patrick and Jean Wagner. This attractive property, built before 1890 according to the 1977 survey, has been remodeled with attention paid to retaining and highlighting its unique historic features, such as a fixed sash window pictures, picture windows with stained glass, and a gable dormer. This property has been impeccably maintained by the current homeowners. Next home we present is 512 West 5th Street. This is home to Sharon Swanson. Although we don't have a date on file for when this home was built, we know that the American four-square-style houses were popular from 1900 to 1930. This attractive and well-maintained stockroom home reflects the classic American four-square characteristics: a square shape, hip roof, and front porch with square columns. This stately home boasts four-over-one window sashes, canvas awnings, a beautiful distinctive triple windows on the west and front of property, west and front of the property. Next, we have 406 West 5th Street, home of Vincent and Mary Tyber. Here we have an example of a charming bungalow craftsman-style home that has been well-cared-for and maintained. Its interesting architectural features include a curved bay window, fireplace, three-over-one windows, and a small triple window on the west facade. This architectural style was very popular in Hastings between 1905 and 1930. And lastly, we feature the Bella Vista. This was an at-risk property and was saved by its purchase recently and remodel. So we're presenting this award to Sowitski Properties and to also Greg Stocko, I believe you are here as well? Or, would you like to come up? Originally a trading post hut built in 1850 by Henry Bailey, this downtown commercial property, perhaps best known in recent times as the Mississippi Bell, was skillfully and beautifully restored by Sowitski Properties and local construction firm Stocko Speedling. Exterior restoration work included removing the nonoriginal exterior storefront facade and replacing it with the historically accurate large storefront. Storefront windows on the south and west, replacing small windows on the west side of the building that had been boarded up for years, adding a framed canvas awning, tuck pointing the brick. Attention to this historic integrity coupled with the skilled design and construction has returned this prominently located commercial property to a landmark status. So I would like to congratulate all of the award winners this evening, and if you could, if you haven't come up, come up to receive your award, and then we'll...
And if the council would like to come down...
Council, won't we go on up?
Yes, and picture-taking time.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations.
And then there'll be a picture afterwards, so if you wanna just walk through the line?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, don't go too far. Thank you so much. What are we, what are we doing today? If the mayor were here, he'd be in the front.
Yeah. He's taking his partner.
Why don't we have the homeowners come up front? And while the HPC will play?
Counsel, we're gonna get very interested in this. I feel very good about that.
I'm gonna cast these...
I'm gonna celebrate what you've just said. I should have...
Very smile.
Just wanna state for the record, as folks take their seats, just how proud we are of the Heritage Preservation Committee and the great work that you guys do to recognize and to maintain standards in this town. You do a great job. And thanks as well to those commercial property owners and residential property owners who have invested your time, your sweat, your blood, your tears into making Hastings a more beautiful place. It's really a wonderful effort, and thank you, staff, for recognizing it. All right, moving to the consent agenda, I would like council to consider moving item number eight, which is change order number one for the 2015 Seal Coat Program, off of the consent agenda, and down to report some city staff public works. The reason for this is that we can't consider a change item to something we haven't voted on yet, so we need to do this in a specific order. So if we can just make that one technical modification to the consent agenda, and then are there any other motions or amendments regarding the consent agenda? Anybody wanna move the consent agenda? Councilmember Balsinick moves it, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on very well to awarding of contracts in the public hearing. Nick?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Alangi. Tonight, for the council's consideration, we have the 2015 Seal Coat Program, awarding of a contract to Allied Blacktop. That bid came in about 11 percent less than what we had in our 2015 budget, and so through the recently mentioned change order, we had worked with them to add some quantities in on streets that were falling under our priority list, but we weren't certain whether we were going to get to them until we had the bid. So in essence, this contract will award for the full program there, including those additional quantities. We'll formalize that with the change order as the second step. But the bid came in at 202,000 for the base bid, and then the additional areas we are doing would add another 15,000 or so. It's important to note that for our seal coating program, we have work that's occurring also in our 2014 reconstruction area, and the costs associated with that seal coating is paid through the construction fund for that project. So there's a little bit of a compilation of different funds that contribute to this overall effort here, and just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Nick. So, council, what's your wish? Motion to approve by councilmember Nelson, is there a second? Councilmember Balsinick seconds. Any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to reports from city staff, community development. Justin, please take us through, I believe this is the appeal of Heritage Preservation Commission decision for Andy McCoy, 209 7th Street West.
Yes, thank you very much, it is. The appeal for the HPC decision is for Mr. McCoy's 2015 application for certificate of approval. I'll begin by giving a brief history of the HPC and why they performed designation, I mean, design reviews. The HPC was established in 1977, about the same time the Minnesota Historical Society placed our two Second Street Historic Districts on the National Register. Properties around the country are designated as historic to conserve a community's heritage, making it available for future generations to enjoy and educate. The purpose of design review is to ensure the modifications to those don't degrade the character-defining features of those resources. It's also to encourage restoration and architectural design and details back to a period of historical significance. The loss of the integrity of these individual sites and districts is more often from inappropriate modifications throughout the years rather than from mass demolitions. In 2008, the applicant proposed to remove the front driveway in conjunction with the street reconstruction project. He asked the HPC if he could move the garage 20 feet to the north and remove the driveway and turn the garage to face the alley. The applicant stated that the location of that garage might be temporary, and added that in the future he may wish to attach it to the house with an addition. The HPC approved that garage move and made no promises about future work, including demolitions or additions. The applicant didn't remove his driveway, did remove his driveway, but didn't move the garage, stating that he later realized it would take too much work and money to do that. This is the 2008 concept site plan that shows the proposed relocation of the garage further to the north. On that site plan, it also showed a proposed 12-by-12 addition and that proposed front addition, which is the turret on the front of the house. In 2012, the applicant presented a similar proposal as today to the HPC, but it did not include the rear demolition of the house, and it was only presented as a concept with little detail at that time. He was looking for approval of a concept before he got into a lot of the details, but the HPC denied the concept because they found that the scale of the addition wasn't consistent with the surrounding houses and the house itself. Also, the setback was inconsistent with the other homes in the area, and because of the loss of the historic garage that they thought appeared to be in good shape. Also, the addition had fake windows along the side because of the substandard setbacks, which they didn't feel was appropriate. The applicant went to the Planning Commission City Council after that denial for a side setback for that proposal. After that time, he would have come back to the HPC with that approval, with his plan again, but the Planning Commission and City Council denied that variance, citing that there's no practical difficulties demonstrated by the applicant and that all their alternatives existed. After the denials, the applicant returned to the HPC for approval to install doors on the alley side of the garage so he could access it from the alley without moving the garage. He didn't follow through with that project, which probably would have required a variance for a setback for the garage or ordinance amendment that wouldn't require a large setback between an alley and the garage doors. These are the four items that the HPC was asked to consider by the applicant to reaffirm the 2008 approval, the front addition or turret, the rear addition, and the garage and partial house demolition. The HPC struggled to understand the purpose of reaffirming the 2008 request as it's to remove, to move the existing garage that the applicant intended to demolish with his application. The applicant explained that he was under the impression that by approving the garage move, the HPC was in favor of his long-term plan to build an addition onto his home and would also support a substandard setback for it. The HPC was supportive of a smaller setback for the original detached garage move, and the HPC stated at the meeting that the minutes of the 2008 meeting showed that the approval was for detached garage move only and specified that it did not approve any future additions or demolishes by that. The HPC denied the request to reaffirm the 2008 approval because it was for a specific purpose not related to the current proposal, and the applicant stated that he does not intend to do any of the work listed in the 2008 certificate of approval. The applicant's current application contains request to demolish the subject garage. This is a picture of the front of the house, it's from several years ago, and this is architectural elevations of the proposed turret. The HPC guidelines prohibit adding features and additions on the front of the homes when you can't, when there's no proof that they existed on the home. The applicant didn't include any evidence that the home or its architectural style of home would even have this type of feature. He stated that the home didn't have this type of feature. And this is the architectural rendering provided by the applicant. The top picture, of course, is how it looks today, and the bottom is with the turret added to it. The HPC denied this request, finding that the design guidelines state that additions should be located on inconspicuous elevations of the house, usually in the rear, and the proposed addition was not a historic feature of the house and doesn't match the architectural Next would be the rear addition. This is a picture of the back of the home. And this is aerial photograph on the left, and the left, on the left, and then on right is a site plan showing the home. The red line is showing the area of the house that would be demolished and rebuilt for this addition. The crosshatched area is new square footage that would also be added, and then further down would be the proposed garage, and then on the very back would be the existing garage that would be demolished. These are architectural elevations showing what the side view of the whole property would be with the addition. The HPC has done approvals for additions, especially in the rear structures. The design guidelines state that they should be in scale with the existing home and other homes in the area. All the homes on the block are of similar size and setbacks. The proposed addition doubles the size of the structure and brings its side and rear setbacks out of line with the area homes. The guidelines also state that addition should create a minimal loss of historic fabric. The entire back of the house is proposed to be replaced with this addition. And this is a computer rendering again. It's a little dark on the overhead, but it shows on the top the existing and the bottom the proposed condition after it would be completed, and this is just another view of the west side showing the same thing. The HPC denied the request, finding that the scale, massing, and size of the addition is out of proportion with the existing home and that other homes in the area. The proposed addition appears to double the size of the existing home, and the guidelines state that new addition should be designed to create minimal loss of historic fabric. The addition, as proposed, would cause the loss of substantial amount of historic fabric because of the rear of the house demolition and the garage. This is related to the garage demolition and parcel house demolition. The HPC does and has approved demolitions of structures. The guidelines state that historic fabric should be preserved. City Code Chapter 3010 specifically outlines findings that the HPC must make prior to approving a demolition in part or in whole. They must find that the destruction is necessary to correct a safe, unsafe, or dangerous condition and that no reasonable alternative besides that demolition exists. The applicant's reasons for the demolition were not related to unsafe or hazardous conditions. This is the, this back portion of the house is proposed to be demolished for the addition. The applicant's reasons related to the demolitions are code compliance issues and existing layout not being conducive to the proposed use. A building inspector reviewed the application that the HPC had received and a list of the reasons for the demolition, which included some code compliance issues. Reading through those, the building inspector said that they don't necessarily need to be, you know, brought up to code or amended. In fact, most old houses have lists similar or more substantial of code deficiencies because every year the code changes and people don't update all their codes to their house as they go through time. A building official, Tom Bakken, recently inspected the rear home of the home and the garage, and he commented to the applicant that they look like they're in great shape. He said, "In the garage, there's an attic storage area that's starting to sag a little bit," and he said, "That could be removed or should be shored up." The HPC denied the request for the demolitions, finding that the HPC is required to make the findings that a demolition is necessary to correct an unsafe or dangerous condition on the property or that no other reasonable alternatives to destruction exist. These required findings are listed in the Code Chapter 3010. The applicant has not provided the commission information necessary for them to make these findings for demolition. In addition, the guidelines do not allow additions that create a great loss of historic fabric. After the denials, several commissioners explained to the applicant that they're not opposed to a rear addition of the home and encouraged the applicant to reapply with a proposal that's more in line with the scale of the existing home and surrounding homes. Some commissioners further explained that they could be supportive of a demolition, particularly of the garage, but added they need proof to back up the required findings that the HPC is required to make. This appeal is to the HPC's denial of the applicant's four requests. The city council has the authority to affirm or reverse each of them based on the information the HPC had presented to them and based on the design guidelines and ordinance that they're required to support. While it's not a public hearing, the applicant may be allowed to present his case for appeal based on the review that the HPC provided. With that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Justin. Well done. Okay, council members, this item is before us, and I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak if he wishes. Is the applicant here, and does he wish to speak? If you could come to the front, please, and provide your name and address for the record, even though we understand it's part of the item.
I'm Andy McCoy at 209 7th Street West. Just, I sent you the letter, it's pretty much got everything in it. The one thing I do wanna bring up is, in the staff report that was given to you, I do not see the original letter and that was sent to the City of Hastings in 2008 that described what my plan was, and it was furnished along with the application and the site plan that I submitted. So I'd just like to make sure that that is, gets to you folks.
Do you happen to have copies of that view tonight, or are you asking us to review it?
I've got, I've got it, that it can be copied.
Okay. Maybe hold off for now and see where the conversation takes us. Meanwhile, please continue. I don't mean to interrupt.
Other than that, I say in my, my letters, I've pretty much, I've tried to be fairly clear on why I'm asking for this, these decisions to be reconsidered because I'm at a situation where I need to get something done with my house. I've been going through this for many years, and I need to get something done, and I just trying to save what is there is, in my opinion, is not worth the amount of cost and effort that's gonna go into trying to do it. They talk about losing historic fabric, and I don't understand what they're looking for because they've given me permission to re-side and put new windows in, and the roof was put on in 2008, so I don't, I'm a little unclear on what they're trying to hang on to.
Mr. McCoy, is it your contention, then, that the proposal that you see here tonight is a proposal that the HPC has already seen? Is that what we are to understand?
I'm sorry, could...
So the proposal we've seen tonight, we've seen these elevations, we've seen the graphics, the one that was kinda a little too dark, but you still gotta sense what was going on there, the turret, all that. Is it, is your contention that those are things that you brought before us into, or excuse me, brought before the Hastings Historic Preservation Committee in 2008, or are you saying something different than that?
No, it's all been, it's, the process was started in 2008 to re-access my property.
...house and is in full view of Spring Street, in addition to 7th Street, if you're, you know, looking at it from a great perspective. So, you know, here we are. The other thing, and you know, as I said, I prefaced this by saying I've got a historic house. You know, how much of this is guidelines and how much of this is actually, you know, chiseled in stone that you absolutely cannot compromise on? You know, could I put new windows on my house? Could I put siding on that's gonna be cheaper than repainting my house? It's not historically accurate, but it does maintain the historic architecture of the house and so forth, and, and so to what extent do we take a look at this? And not so much wink-wink and say, "Well, you go ahead, we're gonna, you know, work around this," but to what extent do we try to work with, with a property owner who is trying to add something substantial to the home, is going to add to the value of the home, and is going to, I feel, add to the value of the properties around it? The, the, the idea that the government can come to a property owner and say, "You can't do this." Now, I understand in terms of side yard setbacks and, you know, things of that nature, but knowing what I know now, and of course, we had no choice, we bought the house, it was on, it was in the historic district, and so, you know, it says in the, it says in the abstract, you know, "This is what you're gonna do. You have to adhere to these guidelines." Well, and again, are they guidelines or are they actually laws regarding that? And, 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 you know, then I ask myself, if this was not a historic district, and if it was 100 years ago when my house was built, and now it's, oh, 35, 40 years later after the house was built, and the owner says, "You know what? I think I'm gonna put a wraparound front porch on." You know, why couldn't he, if he adheres to, you know, the architectural flow and so forth, irregardless of any HPC or federal guidelines or any state guidelines? You know, what, what could the original homeowner do, and what could anybody else do, you know, if they wanted to? If, if there was a good sense that what they were doing was not compromising the integrity...
house. You know, how much of this is guidelines and how much of this is actually, you know, chiseled in stone that you absolutely cannot compromise on? You know, could I put new windows on my house? Could I put siding on that's going to be cheaper than repainting my house? It's not historically accurate, but it does maintain the historic architecture of the house and so forth. And, and so, to what extent do we take a look at this? And not so much wink, wink, and say, well, you go ahead, we're gonna, you know, work around this, but to what extent do we try to work with, with a property owner who is trying to add something substantial to the home, is going to add to the value of the home, and is going to, I feel, add to the value of the properties around it? The, the, the idea that the government can come to a property owner and say, you can't do this. I understand in terms of side yard setbacks and, you know, things of that nature, but knowing what I know now, and of course, we had no choice. We bought the house, it was on, it was in the historic district. And so, you know, it says in the, it says in the abstract, you know, this is what you're gonna do. You have to adhere to these guidelines. Well, and again, are they guidelines, or are they actually laws regarding that? And, 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 you know, then I ask myself, if this was not a historic district, and if it was 100 years ago when my house was built, and now it's, oh, 35, 40 years later after the house was built, and the owner says, you know what, I think I'm gonna put a wraparound front porch on. You know, why couldn't he, if he adheres to, you know, the architectural flow and so forth, irregardless of any HPC or federal guidelines or any state guidelines? You know, what, what could the original homeowner do, and what could anybody else do, you know, if they wanted to, if, if there was a good sense that what they were doing was not compromising the integrity of the property on that? And, okay, if, now, the next question is if Mr. McCoy decided to-
Councilmember Belsonic, was there a first, first question that you wanted them to answer, anybody to answer? Sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure, you said there was a next question. I just want to make sure if there was a first question, can we make sure staff answer?
Well, the question, I had the question, you, you had nodded yes about the additions, porches and so forth on that. So I, I guess I'm seeing that as I go along. What, what is the, what are the legal repercussions if a property owner ignores what the historic preservation guidelines are and does what he wants to? What are, what are the legal repercussions?
I'm gonna ask our city attorney to answer that question. Legal repercussions for not complying with a decision?
Counsel, I think that would include potentially a misdemeanor code violation charge at a criminal level, but probably more likely a civil injunction of some sort brought by the city, like it would do with other failures to comply with codes of the city. So probably a civil injunctive action taken to stop the work from being done and maybe to restore the property to its original condition.
Okay. You know, okay. You know, that kind of takes care of it. I, I'm sorry to monopolize the time on this, but now, just a couple of questions that I have for Mr. McCoy. What, what led you, Andy, to, to change your mind on keeping that old garage and going with something else?
Well, the, the, in the letter that I submitted in 2008, I said that turning the garage around was a temporary situation. On the site plan, it does say a proposed garage. It doesn't say a relocated garage. And when I started looking at the garage, and according to the building codes, if you move a prop, a building, you have to bring it up to code. The existing garage has no headers in it, and there's virtually no support for the roof. So all that would have to be all brought up to code once it was done, or once it was moved. I've already got permission from the HPC to re-side and put new windows in my house. So then, when I looked at the, at the garage and considered that I'd have to reframe it all, and I have to redo the exterior of it all, it just, the amount of cost that would be there to actually move it would be, just, just doesn't make it a wise investment.
Financially feasible. If, if that garage were moved, would you have to go with frostline footings, or could you float your-
If, if it's attached to the house, it needs to have frost footings, otherwise you could do a slab.
Right, right. Okay. But if you were to just take the garage and move it forward, you would not need to go in the frost line, then? It could-
Well, actually, with my, with my garage, you would probably, you would, I would have to check with the building official, but my garage has been repaired, the, I, what I believe has been repaired, because the bottom 16 inches of the walls, I believe, have been cut off because the garage sits in a hole. I believe they, they, they rotted off, so they lifted it up and put two rows of block underneath it. Just by the, I'm, I'm saying that because the way the floor was patched inside makes me think that they tore the outside ring around it out and put the block in. So I think if, once you have, once you put those block in, I think you may have to do a full frost footing for it.
Okay. One last question, and now this is for Justin, and maybe, maybe Dan would want to respond on this, too. I, I guess I have a bit of a problem about saying, well, okay, something was submitted in 2008, now we get to 2009, and it didn't get accomplished, so now everything is sort of thrown out then, and we start from scratch. Have we ever had situations where, well, I, I don't know. I, maybe nobody could answer that, where-
Staff, can you speak to the, the value and/or purpose of sunsets in this case?
Yeah, definitely. It happens, you know, quite often. Usually when the HPC re-reviews one of these, it's usually pretty quick. They don't do it as in depth of research or consideration, but, you know, the, the guidelines change throughout, throughout time. The commissions changed. Since 2008, half the commissioners are different commissioners, and maybe wouldn't make the same findings that, that past ones would. So, and, and a lot of our, a lot of our approvals only last a year. All the approvals that are handed up through Planning Commission, they have a sunset time on them of a year. It's pretty common.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's any reason why something that went past the deadline could not be reopened. I mean, can, can we just, you know, can we just look at it and say, oh, yeah, okay, we missed the deadline here? And, and of course, things change. I mean, we're finding out that there were problems with the garage, and this needs to be done, that needs to be done, and there was a recession along the way. And can we revisit all of this, rather than just say, absolutely not?
Well, Councilmember Belsonic, and I do see, I do see some, some, some desire in the, in the audience to speak. I would ask, as we allow staff to answer council questions momentarily and see where the conversation takes us, and, and then, I don't think we're gonna make a decision without a full discussion. So let's, let's trust this part of the process just yet. But I will, I do want council to answer, I do want staff to answer council question regarding this idea of renewal reopening. Is that what's happening here, or is this something different that's happening here, this reopening?
Well, that's what he was doing. His first request on the application is to reauthorize that 2008 approval. And, and they, I'm sure the commission would have approved it if the same application didn't also say, we also want to tear down the garage that you're getting the reapproval for. I've never seen the commission, since I've been here in eight years, not reauthorize an approval.
Okay. Yeah, okay, for now.
Thank you, council member. I thought I saw Councilmember Brooks, and then back to Councilmember Nelson. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up that in my conversations with Mr. McCoy, there are also concerns about accessibility, which I, we haven't talked about yet. But if you are doing an addition and you are moving a family member or someone to your property and you need handicap accessibility, I would imagine that most historic homes would not be ready for that kind of access. So, and, and my understanding is that is part of the issue here, is there is a need for accessibility. So is there any way that we have addressed that specifically, what, what he could do within the guidelines that would make this, his home accessible?
Well, as far as inside the house, he can make any, any alterations that he'd want without need for any approvals from the HPC. As far as the outside of the house goes for accessibility, there's a lot of property owners that find that at some certain time in their life will need accessibility and often add ramps or other means to enter the property.
And, and so that would be allowable in this case, is what I'm hearing?
Correct. You know, a ramp or something on the outside, or a new, a new door in an inconspicuous location at grade or something would need approval, but it hasn't been part of a application for this one.
Councilmember Brooks, anything else?
So, my understanding is also, but the reasoning for attaching the garage to the house and therefore building onto the back was basically accessibility directly into the house for any car, any vehicle that would be carrying someone, for example, who's in a wheelchair to get into the house. So have we, is there any way, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to, I understand that we have a need to preserve the historic fabric, absolutely understand. The homeowner has a family need, and this has been going on for a significant amount of time. So what is, what can we do to come to some sort of agreement about what can happen here? Because I think his need and his, is increasing with time, and since this has gone on so long. So I, I'm just wondering what else we can do to facilitate what his needs from the city side.
Hey, well, there's not an ordinance or a guideline that would strictly prohibit the addition of a garage to a home. All the reasons listed for the denials could be addressed by the applicant by changing his proposal and getting an attached garage possibly, or an addition, or a new garage. All that is possible, but the applicant hasn't amended his applications to meet the guidelines based on the feedback he's received over these years from the HPC. In fact, every year he comes, every time he's come to the HPC for approval, his proposal's gotten more outside the guidelines. It's gotten bigger, or there's been more demolitions involved. It's been harder to meet common ground between the HPC and the applicant because of that.
Councilmember Brooks, anything else?
What I'm wondering is if this merits more discussion. I don't know if it does, but is it possible that we could move this issue to the Council Commission for Historic Preservation and discuss it there?
Councilmember Brooks, it's a fine idea. There is a Historic Preservation Committee. Councilmember Belsonic chairs that. You and I are the other two members on that committee. If we were to make a motion to table that, when it would be seconded, that is a non-debatable motion. So I'm gonna recommend that we continue our discussion for a little while longer and see where this takes us. And then, based on whatever council feeling is at that time, we may find ourselves in continued discussion on a different day. But we'll see where it goes, and I know that Councilmember Nelson does have his hand up. But before I do that, were there any other questions that you had? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of questions here, just follow up. I, I think, Councilmember Brooks, I think a lot of this thing, we're looking back forward in 2008, the applicant really didn't do anything with his property. So I, I really, for one, think we should just kind of toss out this whole 2008, what happened in 2009, because he came to us, he met approval, he removed the driveway. That was it. That's all he did. So it hasn't been really going on that long because he didn't really do anything with that, at least in my opinion. I'll share that as my opinion. Applicant, Mr. McCoy, you, you stated that the garage, currently the garage is, is in rough shape, but yet, Mr. Bakken came to the, look at your property, and he said that their garage was in, in the back of the house were in relatively good shape, as, as reported by staff. So who are we to believe that your garage is in bad shape, but our building official is citing that it's in good shape?
But the building official agreed with me that there's a significant amount of remo, of repair that would have to be done to the garage in order to meet the, meet codes.
Sure.
And that's where I'm, I'm saying, the amount of effort that is going to, the garage, if it sat, if it stayed where it is, could be repaired, and it would be worthwhile. But once you start to move, the cost that comes in by moving it and then having to repair it all just nullifies whatever benefit there would be by trying to save part of it.
Sure, understood. Okay, I appreciate that. You know, and I kind of looking at the application here, too. We have the current application, and again, it was brought up about, you know, adding on for a family change. I'll just leave it at the family change. That doesn't appear to be on the application. So, you know, perhaps maybe the question for this one is, is staff, I mean, is it helpful to have all of the details on the application for us to have it in front of us when we're reviewing these documents? Or is that something that would normally be brought up at the time of, you know, when the HPC would get together and discuss, you know, the application?
Well, yeah, definitely staff and the HPC would, would rather have all the information right from the beginning on the application. It's always been a struggle to get, especially on a project this size, to get all the information on there. But, but, you know, again, the HPC kind of looks at the effect of the aesthetics of the property, you know, the exact reasons that they need internal changes done, and doesn't really apply to that. We would hope that the applicant would, with the guidelines in mind and their needs in mind, come forward with an application that, that would, that would accomplish both, both things.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you for that. And just one more, too, another thing, Your Honor. Again, in my opinion, and allow me to share this as only my opinion, of course, we're going to be flexible enough to allow somebody to re-side their house and to put windows in their house without meeting standards. Putting on new siding doesn't necessarily change the, the lack of the historic part of it. We want you to have a, a good home to live in and, and efficient as far as you can, can make it. So, you know, I, I kind of take offense a little bit to the fact that, you know, the applicant is saying that we have, we've allowed to put new windows on, I've allowed, been, put new shingles on. Houses have shingles on them. You know, so I kind of take a little bit of offense to that, that, you know, where's the historic preservation in that? We're gonna allow those things. We're not just about big government up here saying, no, you can't do this because you live in a historic preservation district. You know, we're gonna allow for certain things. So again, my opinion, and thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Well shared. Councilmember Vaughn, and we're, to quote, to quote the actual mayor of Hastings, we're getting close to being fully informed. So, Councilmember Vaughn.
It is, and that's what I follow on. That's one commission I didn't sit on before I came here. And, but I, I'm starting to really appreciate it because it's unique, unique to Hastings. I mean, you don't, don't see this in every community, which is a good thing, but a challenging thing. And that's what, I think we need to keep the integrity. I appreciate what they do. I mean, the, the value of the knowledge that they, the time and effort they put into all this. That's why it's hard for me when it keeps dangling on and, and the labor time that we put into on their volunteer time. But I also want to know what, what's the role of that commission? Is it, is there definite role that, do they give guidance? Do they give ideas, or do they react to what's in front of them, just like what we're doing? Do they do site visits? These are all the questions that I don't know about this. That's why I like the idea to say, let's, let's defer this to committee first, but I also want to get some past history. What's the real role of this commission to do for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. I would ask Melanie to fill us in on just the basic purpose. Maybe give us a summary of that committee for now, and then, or excuse me, commission for now, and then we can address that perhaps in more detail in, in a committee meeting or another venue.
Okay.
Just a basic, you know, the statute, or the ordinance purpose. I was gonna say statutory purpose, excuse me.
Well, you know, I'm gonna probably defer to Justin to give a little bit more history on it, but of course, it recognizes the historical nature of our properties and the fact that we value that and want to preserve it. We have adopted the historical guidelines, adopted by the Department of the Interior, I believe it is, on the federal level. And then I'm gonna turn it over to, to Justin to maybe fill in some of those blanks for us.
Well, we're a certified local government, meaning we have rights through the state statutes to do historic preservation, designate properties, and review changes to them to prefer, prefer, preserve our heritage, architectural heritage. And, you know, we've done that since 1977. In the eighties, we did a lot of designations. We've got, you know, a couple hundred houses that are designated as heritage preservation sites. And like I said before, the, the danger of losing them is not from a wrecking ball coming through and leveling a neighborhood and redeveloping it. It's, it's through demolition by neglect, people letting their houses fall into disrepair, and modifying their houses so much that they don't resemble or maintain any of the character that they were designed with. So that's kind of the concern of the HPC with big projects like this. You know, a big addition on the front of an architectural feature that the State Historic Preservation Office, at the request of Mr. McCoy, reviewing it, found that it didn't match the architecture of this house, and also changing, doubling the size of the house. There's not much left from the original house anymore. I guess I got off, I started answering a question that was kind of answered to me a long time ago that I've been thinking about.
That's okay, Steph. Please continue, Justin.
Sure. So have I answered your question about that?
Okay. I, I like to think them, Councilmember Vaughn, I like to think of them as stewards of our, of our city's history, and with some partial enforcement authority. They can make decisions, they can deny. In fact, that's what's come before us now is, is, is an opportunity to affirm or reverse a denial that if we were to take no action, would stand. So that is, that is something that we, we should, we should consider. I'd like to, to offer a thought, and then I might ask council for a motion so that we, we manage to finish up tonight before session ends and the mayor gets back. And that would be for, I, I guess I am the, the only council member up here, which is why I'm sitting in this chair right now, who, who was in office back for the entirety of 2008. And I can, I can remember, actually, the more discussion has gone on here, the more I'm recollecting, the more I'm piecing it together from my own mind. I, I absolutely remember the 2012 conversation. That was easy, the tree and, and everything. That was, that was a fine discussion. Like, I, I do also recall the, the prior one, although it was less remarkable. What it did bring into my mind was actually the idea of sunsets, and that there are sunsets that do apply to most decisions that are made, including sometimes by this body. Unless we put something in ordinance, when we approve something or when we deny something, it lasts for a predetermined- it lasts for a predetermined part of time. And staff are usually very careful to put in all the documents, and they protect us, they protect our city, they protect our commissions and our residents and businesses by putting into very clear legal terms how long the approvals last. Unlike our churches and our fine residential areas and our other things, these decisions are not historical monuments to be preserved over years and years and years. They are meant to be changed with the people and with the times and with different interpretations. And as you said before, as we change our ordinance, we don't want to make a decision that was made 10 years ago invalid by mistake. So I gather we'll probably be referring this to committee based on the decision, based on the conversation I've heard. I see a lot of desire to continue this conversation, and I'll entertain a motion in a moment. But if this were to happen, since I can't discuss it after we make the motion, Mr. McCoy, I'm going to make a couple of suggestions to you, and one of them is to, to listen carefully to what the Historic Preservation Commission is trying to tell you. And I'll tell you what I'm hearing when I hear them speak, and you can determine as you listen whether or not you're hearing the same thing. And the first is that they want to work with you. I think we as a city want to work with you. We want to find a way for you to be happy in your home, take care of your family, do all those things that you deserve, you have a right to do in your home. I also want you to hear that they are offering possibilities that are reasonable compromises in this councilmember's mind. They are telling you that you could come back for a smaller scale, and you can shake your head all you want to, but this is my opinion, so I get to deny it. Smaller scale is an option that you've got. You've also got the option for providing proof that the attributes that you're asking for, the size, are reasonable, that there are examples of them. As Councilmember Balsinack said himself, you could walk down the street. I'm looking at an aerial map on Google Maps right now. Maybe you can find one that's about the size of what you want that isn't a church. There are a couple, actually, that might make good candidates. And you should, you should avail yourself of these tools and look at them, look at square footage. There are other sites that will give you very precise real estate information. You may find something with a turret. You may find something that gives you the square footage that you, that you want. What we're not seeing here, what I'm not seeing here, what I don't think the commission's seeing here, is a willingness to come back with something that shows that you are listening to them as carefully as you want them to listen to you. So I would ask if we do table this and we do move it forward for consideration, that we give enough time, that staff give enough time to, for all parties concerned, to talk to each other, to talk to the committee, and then we will have plenty of time to have further discussion during that committee meeting if we are to have one. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion so we can put this matter to rest for the evening. It will not end it for the evening if we table it. There'll be other opportunities to talk. Is there a motion to that effect to table? I'll entertain one. Councilmember Brooks makes a motion to table for a date to be determined by staff and communicate it, of course, to the applicant and to the commission and to all other parties involved, interested parties. Is there a second?
Well, does that motion include sending it to the Historic Preservation?
Yes, sending to the Historic Preservation Committee for discussion. I apologize for.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Balsinack. Seconds that motion. That is a non-debatable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. The matter is tabled, and we will make sure that everybody in the room who has expressed an interest in discussing knows when that meeting is happening so that there can be continued discussion. Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item. I believe we have an item before us that we may not be able to take a vote on, counsel, given the fact that we may not have a sufficient quorum for a special use permit. Melanie, can you walk us through it, please?
Your Honor and counsel, the item before your resolution for a special, special use permit requires six out of seven to approve or take action on it. With only five in attendance, we would ask that you table the item till June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
So moved by Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Brooks seconds that motion. Non-debatable motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. That was much faster than our previous item. I believe that takes us to comments from the audience. There are no other, correct, comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? Going once, going twice for comments from the, Mr. McCoy, did you want to make a comment? No? Okay. Fair enough. No comments from the audience. Unfinished business or new business from the council? None before us. Moving to announcements or reports from councilmembers. Councilmember Balsinack?
Oh, just to let everybody know, this, let's see, yeah, it is this Thursday, it is 21st. I'll be attending a meeting of the Dakota County Communications Commission. That's our 911 entity. And that is, yeah, Thursday morning, 8:00 AM in Rosemont.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Vaughn?
And I have a reminder that I have a Red Rock Corridor Commission meeting on the 28th of May at Newport City Hall, and I am open to the residents. I am looking for input on transit on Red Rock Corridor specifically, but I'd like to get some input from residents and about their thoughts on it.
All right. Terrific. Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Any other announcements for council? If there are none, I have a few. The Historic Preservation Committee Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th. That'd be tomorrow, has been canceled. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 25th, an observance of Memorial Day. On that day, there will be at 9:00 AM a flag ceremony at the Veterans Home. At 10:00 AM, ceremony at Roadside Park. Speaker will be retired Air Force Major General Harry Seaborn. If there is rain, the location will be the National Guard Armory. Following the ceremony, the program will move to Soldiers and Sailors Cemetery and conclude at the New Veterans Memorial at Levy Park.
Please do.
Yeah, I thought I'd walk everybody through from beginning to end what we started with and where we're at today, if that's okay. So October of 2014, not much going on yet, but we'll just skip through these here. The infamous canopy there that covered up this concrete work that was happening underneath. We'll get to springtime and can see things coming together. The stone columns went up last week and the plaques were affixed to them. And then just this morning, we put the boulder back in place and the flagpole up. So it's really getting close here. Our crew graded out that soil along the slope there to make it nice and presentable for next Monday's ceremony.
Outstanding. So that's where the, that's where things will conclude. They will start at roadside and then conclude there. And at 1:45 PM, the Vets Park Press Box Dedication will take place before the Hastings Hawks play the Hampton Cardinals, and no doubt trounce them. Councilmember Balsinack, is there anything you want to add about the day?
Just to say that there is a flag ceremony at the Veterans Home at 9:00 AM.
Flag ceremony at Veterans Home at 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. I'm sorry, did you say that already?
I did, but it bears, it bears repeating. It's absolutely fine. It's okay. It only happens once a year, so let's make sure we get the information.
I was remiss. I was wandering around in my mind somewhere. Which I do very often, and I don't mind doing it my age.
I'm going to, as chair, I have to show the maturity to pass on comments like that, I think, so I'm just going to keep going with the announcements.
I'm going to interrupt you again. Excuse my, we do have one map just to show where you're finding, just with construction downtown. We want to make sure people know how to get to.
Wanted to get that out there for the folks watching at home and just indicate some parking options for folks that would want to come down to the New Veterans Memorial and the routes they would take on foot to get there. Not so much an access from up above in the, where that end of Ramsey Street is there because there's a lot of construction activity, but around the perimeter and using the trail system.
So don't try to get down there using your car on Sibley. You know, instead, at least don't expect to get very far. Instead, if you absolutely want to try to use your car, perhaps you can only walk short distances, please use Ramsey Street, take a hard left after the buildings there, and then you'll get access to that parking lot.
Park in the blue area.
Otherwise, you've got in the blue area. Otherwise, there's some street parking available right off Tyler and other areas downtown. All right. Thank you very much, Nick.
Great.
Additional announcement, Planning Commission will meet at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 26th. That meeting will take place in these chambers. The Finance Committee will meet on Friday, May 29th, at 7:30 AM to discuss the 2016 budget, never soon enough, and other financial matters. The Finance Committee will also meet at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 1st, followed by a special city council meeting, oh no, excuse me, the regularly scheduled city council meeting at 7:00 PM. Any other announcements or corrections? Yes?
Yeah, we moved the, excuse me, we moved the Finance Committee meeting from June 1st to June 15th. That was my error in not correcting that, so my apologies.
No worries. No worries. So I'll redo that last, that last announcement, which is the Finance Committee will meet, first of all, on Friday, May 29th, at 7:30 AM, and then again at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 15th, which will then be followed by the city council meeting at 7:00 PM. All right. Seeing no other business before the council this evening, a motion to adjourn is in order. So moved by Councilmember Balsinack, seconded by Councilmember Brooks. That is a non-debatable motion, the third one we've had this evening. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. We are adjourned.